Whatever you want there. It's been published in the Wakefield paper, the regular media, but been posted. So I think we've got that taken care of. Start out with a roll call. Larry?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Val?
Here.
And Scott?
Here.
And with that, we'll look for... I'm forgetting my agenda. I guess I can look at the one back there. Hope you haven't changed anything, Zach. We're gonna open the public hearing on the One and Six Year Street Program. Is that still the first one?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a pretty good one-year plan. And the six-year plan is gonna kinda be based upon what Val and Larry did on the street. They're on the street committee. They did a real thorough... You thoroughly looked at our streets and you made recommendations. And I think with Jim and Larry and Val getting together, they can kinda figure out that the next five years. But like Jim had said earlier, the one year is the one that we'll get... We're gonna really be working on. The other ones change a lot from year to year. I mean, there will be some changes. But we do need to put that in as a requirement at the six-year plan. So that public hearing is open. And the six... The one-year plan is to pave South Main. And the bids were let for that yesterday. And the low bid was... Came in lower than we anticipated. And Rod will go over those tonight. And then the other one will be bid in February. And that's the one we've been waiting for with the Mitchener Street Project, which is a big project. And with the fact that the bid came in low for the South Main project, we think that might allow us to get a street done that we've been looking at for a long time. And that's Sixth Street between Main and Winter. And so those are the main parts of our one-year street program. And then we think we can put a couple of smaller projects that Val and Larry had earmarked two years ago. And so it's kind of a neat deal. We're gonna get a lot of those things done. But the public hearing is open. If you have any comments on that one-year plan. And the six-year plan just continues trying to improve the streets in Wakefield. The next item on the agenda, Roger is here from the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District. And we're happy to welcome Roger. And Roger's got some information to share with us.
Yes. Hi, my name is Roger Augustusson. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Lower Elkhorn Natural Resource District. On behalf of the board and staff, I'd like to congratulate you on your Plant 2019 project. The Lower Elkhorn NRD works closely with people across our 15-county district, provide funding for a wide variety of projects. Cost-share programs are available for road structures, flood control levees, tree planting projects, abandoned well sealing, soil conservation, water quality, recreation and wildlife habitat. On behalf of the Lower Elkhorn NRD board, I'd like to congratulate you on your Plant 2020 project with this check.
Thanks a lot, Roger. And I tried to get Bob Berry here because he's head of our tree board. But Nicky wrote this grant, so I'd like to have Nicky get the check. How would that be?
Oh, okay.
And can we get a picture of that, Sean? With Nicky and Roger? Would you mind a picture, Roger?
No, not a problem at all. I'm not dressed very fancy, but...
I'm not either. Megan? Hey, we've got a lot of trees in Wakefield thanks to a lot of work that Megan has done for us. And Roger, we really appreciate it.
Do you want the mayor in the picture?
No, I don't need to be in the picture. You're gonna shake hands with Roger.
No, we need him.
Thanks a lot, Roger. Appreciate it. Thank you, Megan.
No? You don't have it? Wait, wait, wait. Roger, come back. Roger, come back.
He really won this in the papers.
I know.
All right, thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. And then we'd like to welcome Bradley Hagland here tonight. And Carol Clark, are you as Eagle Scout sponsor for this? You're gonna help him. That's good.
I'm not sure.
Well, thank you for being here, Carol. And Bradley, you've got a presentation and it's gonna tell us what you're gonna be doing for your project.
Yeah. So I'm Bradley Hagland, and I'm Eagle Scout, which is ranked just before Eagle. And if you have an Eagle project, I have to do an Eagle. If you have an Eagle rank, I have to do an Eagle project. And an Eagle project I would like to do is straighten the tube stones in the old section of the cemetery. My scout master and I met with Sandy Idd prior to the cemetery board meeting that I visited and proposed my idea. And after I met with them, they supported the idea of moving this project. And I was asking if... I was gonna ask if you would support my efforts with equipment, if we needed possibly the financial contribution, if we need bags of concrete, if we don't have enough shovels or containers. I wanted to do this because most of the graves that are in the old section of the cemetery are craked and need straightening. And it would be better to do older sections because there's nobody around to sort of like take care of the graves and make sure that they're in good condition. If you would support my idea, I would be planning on moving this and straightening the ground this side out. So it would be in the summer, and so people would be more than helping. So it would be easier for summer. How I'm gonna do this is approve volunteers. There's gonna be people from my scout troop that will help. And Sandy Idd and other adults have already said they could help. Possibly the Cub Scouts could help too, so they could maybe have an idea of doing this too, you know, maybe get up in the Boy Scouts. No, getting Eagle Scout. So does anybody have any questions on this?
So Bradley, this is your project, and you're gonna supervise these people in doing the work and try to get everything set up and organized?
Yeah.
And Ed's the scout master for our Boy Scout troop, and I'm sure your dad's gonna be helping you.
Yeah.
Well, you know, can we get a motion that we're gonna... Whatever you guys think, maybe a little bit of discussion and see if we're gonna help approve this project, first of all, then see if we can help with the equipment? And if anybody thinks... You know, we have monetary amounts. How many stones are you working at?
I actually have pictures of them. But I have them unidentified. And so these are the pictures that are like before, like when they're still craked. If you wanna pass it over to them. There's two of each grave. They're one next to another. But those are the ones I was... Those are gonna be the before pictures. And then there's gonna be pictures after that, showing you what they look like after they've been straightened. Like before and after pictures.
How many are you identifying now?
Twelve?
Yeah.
And there's probably no family around for those twelve to help stand the things.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Bradley? Scott, you had a question?
No.
Are you ready to make a motion to approve this project?
I would make a motion to approve it, definitely.
Do you have a second?
Depends on what the equipment that we need.
And Jim said that won't be a problem. So I think that's included. And then we think the cemetery board has money. But if you leave, you know, you can always come back to us. All right. So we got a motion in a second. Larry?
Hi.
Ross?
Hi.
Val? And Scott? There you go. Thank you. It's a good project. Good luck. Thanks for being here, you guys. Thanks, Carol. All right. The next item is on the minutes from... Yeah, a lot of meetings that we... Actually, the minutes from November 13th, May 2019. They're in your bag, yeah. Everybody see anything in those minutes? Incorrect. Was that the one with the... Dealt with the liquor license?
That was a regular... Yeah. A special meeting.
Okay, that was our regular November meeting. Did you get a chance to look at those minutes? Find any errors?
I'm making a motion to approve the November 13 council meeting.
Motion to approve in a second to approve the council meetings on November 13th, regular meeting. Ross?
Hi.
Val? Scott?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And motion passed. Now we've got the special meeting. This is the one, I think, with the license for the Civic Center. Is this correct?
Correct.
And you had that published in the paper already. It's been in the paper, I think.
Oh, I didn't do that, but I think it has been.
The license is...
Yeah, the new... The hearing for it was next week.
It was in this week's paper.
All right. There'll be those pictures. I'm making a motion to approve.
Scott made the motion. Do we have a second for the special meeting? Scott made the motion, and we got a second. Thanks again, guys. And Scott?
Hi.
Larry? And Ross?
Hi.
And then we've got our special meeting when Steve spoke on December 3rd at the Civic Center. And that pretty short list of minutes there, but... A lot of good discussion. And he brought a lot of good... Nice show for doing that. Val made the motion, Ross seconded it. And Scott? And Larry?
Hi.
And Ross?
Hi.
And Val?
Hi.
And then we've got the 2019 Treasurers Report. You've had a chance to look at that. We signed the rest of the checks. There were some that came in. The biggest one was about $20,000 from the engineering. I believe that's on the... I believe that's South Main or Mitchener.
I would say it's the same. Probably both.
Okay, so both. Any questions about that Treasurers Report?
I have a few. How come the park utilities are still $600? What would be taking $600 worth of utilities to the park? Huh? It was page 17.
17? Yeah.
School use that press box for referees.
It's from water. It would've been September 20th to October 25th. So it was during the football season.
Okay.
September 20th to October 25th. So right in the heart of the season.
So that would be the water.
And I had a question about the repair and maintenance of the hatchery. That was to fix up the order and replace 7,200 bucks?
Yep.
Okay.
They're putting it...
The basement. The whole basement.
Oh, it's a whole basement?
What do they do in the basement?
They sealed it. They put a poly down over the whole floor. You should go and see it. Interesting. And then they have venting out the side now, so any of the old mustard and all that from the dirt floor is just piped out and constantly...
And then the person who was doing the meat processing, he had his three years with... His three years were up, basically. And so they're trying to stick to that where you're in the hatchery for three years, then you move out and get a new place in Wakefield, hopefully. And I think he relocated in Omaha. But then they have a new business going in there, so they did some remodeling there, I believe. And that was part... That was probably...
Those were in the checks you signed today.
Right. I just signed each, yeah. Okay. So they don't know those yet. And then Brian said that the hatchery is talking about they're not gonna do... They've kind of agreed they're not gonna do any more 501(c)(3)'s. But they get the question all the time, well, how can... Nearly new stay there? And it's because they're 501(c)(3) and the board has kinda decided they're not gonna accept any other 501(c)(3)'s just for that very reason, because people wonder why they can stay in. And so that's... I asked those questions. So what else, Val?
Serve repair maintenance, $2,000. Did we have them flushed? Did we... Yeah? Okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to ask. What else? Oh, electrical contracted labor under electric. Is that for repairs, the update? I don't know.
What's the bill on it?
6,600 bucks? It's a number.
That's an PPD.
That's what I thought might be, but it...
O&M?
Yeah.
And maybe the stuff on self-maintenance. So a little bit of construction, but most of it's all O&M cost. Most of the cost.
And the only other thing that struck me was other income to the general account was $30,000, blah, blah, blah. But that was probably the CRA check that came in and goes back out. That's what I thought. First, I thought, where'd you get $30,000?
I asked that same question last night.
Those are all mine.
Anyone else? Should we get a motion to approve the claims?
Salute.
The Treasurers Report? Val? Scott? Larry?
Hi.
Ross?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
And Scott? Thank you, guys. Does anyone wish to speak for the public hearing on the One and Six Year Street Program? The South Main project would probably be the first one that they start working on, right? And as soon as they can, it'd be here, you think? And we've got some projects for the six-year program, but we didn't... It's not written out as it has been before. Tonight, we're gonna approve Jim as the street superintendent for 2019. And Jim's got licenses... There's a license and a B license. And he's our street superintendent. And he also does the job for Laurel as a street superintendent. You have to have a licensed street superintendent. And Jim is pretty highly regarded. He knows a lot about streets and what's under it, right? Which I don't know. So that's something else that's on our agenda tonight. But if we don't have any questions, we'll close our public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak towards the one and six? Okay. Oh, thanks, Lee.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Larry's motion, and Val's second. Okay. Ross?
Hi.
Val? Scott?
Hi.
And Larry?
Hi.
Thank you. And this next one's about Jim being certified as our street superintendent for the 2019 year. So you have a motion to approve that? We've got a light assigned thing that we've got and everything.
We have a resolution to approve.
We have to get the resolution?
Yes.
We do?
It's in the package. It's on the third page.
Oh. Well, I had a copy, but I left it at home. Is that their only copy?
Yes.
And this is new, right?
Yes, sir.
We haven't done this before.
It's new this year.
Can you see Jim's computer? Read it and how he got it.
I don't think I have to read this whole thing, do I? Last time, I read for half an hour, and then you found it. Seven's enough. This is signing of the year-end certification of city street superintendent form 2019. And be it resolved that the mayor of Wakefield is hereby authorized to sign the attached year-end certification of city street superintendent. And then Jim signs it and puts his certification down here. So we'd like to introduce that and move it past, right? And is there a number on 26, 2019?
I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 26-119 to the superintendent to move it past.
Thank you, Larry. We need a second.
Second.
Who else has got the second? Okay.
Hi.
Scott?
Hi. Hi.
On that, thanks. Doesn't Jim have to sign it too?
Yeah, well, we need about that.
And just the board members' signature? Just the board members'. Then Jim signs it an hour later.
I need...
Okay. Oh, do it later on, you're bleeding.
Yeah.
All right. And then Rod is up to award the bid and talk about the bids for the South Main project.
Yeah, so we opened the bids for the South Main project yesterday. We had six bidders, which is really pretty good. I think that's, you know, a simple bid at this point, Eric, against our community's agreement to do the project. And it sounded like something more hard-looking work. And I think the bids kinda identified that. We received some real good pricing, I believe. Engineer's estimate on the project was $126,000. The bid tab that appears probably in your packet, it looks like, shows that there was a spread of the bid between $163,000 to $173,000, which was a little bid being A&R Construction on plain view. I worked with this contractor before for multiple years. I think they do a good job. I think they do a little good job for you guys on this project. So I'd recommend approving them for the project.
Any discussion?
Okay, my question is, will they... Because now we're gonna let the bids for Mitchener, which we kinda wanna done first, but you explained that this spring it's easier to do the North Line, wait till school's out, and then do Mitchener? Or not North, South Main? Will that affect their bid? Will it help? Will it hurt our town?
What do you mean?
Well...
It'll impact the second bid on the Mitchener project.
There's some similarities between South Main and Mitchener, that both streets are the same width. So in theory, this contractor will have equipment here to pave this project at a 28-foot wide street. So possibly, they maybe not have the same mobilization costs as maybe somebody else because they already have equipment here. So you could see some benefits from that, possibly. I mean, I can't really say if it will or will not, because I don't really think it would the contractor.
You don't think it would hurt us, though, the fact that we've already did this one?
No, definitely not. I think this, in my opinion, is better to bid these two at separate times because now these other five contractors, as well as this contractor, either know they can go after this project. And maybe if they're hungry, they can go after it a little bit harder than they did this project. If we open them at the same time, they wouldn't have that information available. For example, I know that some of these contractors did a large DOT project in Winnebago like about two weeks ago. And I think some of these contractors that didn't get that probably were more excited to go after this project.
So is any other discussion, guys? You wanna have a motion to approve the low bid? It's A&R Construction that they go by, right?
Correct.
And it's on a plane view?
You said you worked with similar projects in the city. Yeah. Projects in South City, they have been street projects. I've worked on bike道 projects with them as well in northeast Nebraska. They do a lot of MDOT work. They just recently did a project in Jackson. They were doing that work there. We weren't involved with that project, but I don't know. So are there any projects they have on?
They did our levee underpass, Ross and I did in the trail.
Will they be involved at all in our repairs to the levee?
Don't have any idea. It'd be a separate bid.
Okay. But they know the community?
They do know. If there's no other questions, we...
Make a motion to approve the bid for the South Main Street for $163,000 to A&R Construction.
Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Ross?
Hi.
Hi.
So that's motion passed. And then we've got, I think Rod's got two more items. Number 11 is approve the plans for the Mitchener Street paving project. And we'll go into that one next.
Yep. So Mitchener Street, we would like to bid that project out. Due to the holiday schedule and everything, we'll bid it in January. We won't start advertising and go through Christmas holiday and New Year's. So it'll be after that. And then we'll bring it forward to the February meeting to open virtually a work base for that project.
Do you have any questions about the Mitchener? Because that's a big project, and it's gonna be a nice project. I think what we've always done fast is they start closest to school, and they work in the nowhere. And they've always seemed like they've always started just about the week after the week school's out.
Yeah. With Johnson and Highland, we made specific... We made sure that since that was kinda in the bus route of the schools and everything. But especially with Mitchener, it's a little bit further to the west, so that it may not impact the schools as much. So we could start it possibly sooner if we wanted to.
I see.
So...
What do you guys think?
They'll long to bid in February. They'll be ready to go as the construction starts, so...
Is Mitchener pretty busy when school's up? But it could be done... I mean, it could be closed for when school's up.
They get around. There's other avenues.
Yeah. I mean, if they absolutely wanna start construction, they start on the north line and work this way till school's out.
It's always phased that the intersection would be open. So it's not a hard closure of an entire section.
And there's one chunk of that that's already paved. And I don't know if it includes the intersections or not.
Yeah. So some... So you'll be able to go east-west.
What about then the one block down here on Off Main? Main and Mitchener?
Rod looked at that yesterday for the first... I mean, that's between Main Street and Winter Street on Sixth Street.
So we kinda walked through that yesterday and kinda kicked it in the nowhere. Till we get some of that.
Then you found them all.
No, so we looked at that, and, you know, we should be able to put that all together now and have that ready for spring. You know, to be ready in the spring as well, so...
So that'll just tag onto the Mitchener?
No, it won't be the same project. Just due to the funding requirements and stuff, the Mitchener, you wanna keep that as a separate project. So it'll be a third project.
We think if they're here already, they might get a good bid on that.
I think the savings between the South Main project could literally pay for that project and still be in our budget.
Yeah.
So good with that.
We spoke for you and Larry, basically, in saying that that was a priority street. Are we correct on that, Larry?
Correct.
Yes, that one block.
So we kinda took the initiative, and since Rod is here, you said you can engineer that.
Essentially, we have three projects for 2020.
So thank you.
On Mitchener, is there gonna be any big changes on that street? What we're looking at now and what it'll look like when it's done?
No, it really should... I mean, the way Highland and Johnson looked before and after, Mitchener will be very similar.
Those are good streets.
There's a little section right now that doesn't have sidewalk between Eighth and Seventh along the side. That will connect that sidewalk up to have a complete sidewalk between Seventh and Eighth.
That will connect that sidewalk up to have a complete sidewalk between Seven and Eight. Um, but otherwise, it's primarily a remove and replace what's there, uh, with, with new and improved.
So, we're gonna put a new sidewalk between Seven and Eight?
Rod, Rod looked at that yesterday. It's, it's where Happles live. It's where Kim Barges live. And they thought it's so close to the school.
Needs it.
Kind of the safety thing. And then there was one house, Mortenson's house, we think, where there's some steps. And Rod thought we need to put the steps back in. Those were the only two things we really talked about that were changes.
I thought we wouldn't put the steps down.
We won't put steps back in?
Correct.
We won't, okay.
Where was the step set?
Where Mortenson, what, where Mortenson's live there?
Right.
Oh, sure.
I can't think of their address, but.
Okay, coming off the curb, there's a couple steps.
Yeah, there's a couple steps, right.
Okay. So, is that okay with the property owners between Seventh and Eight that they're gonna have a sidewalk along their front yard?
That won't be their front yard again. The city's property.
Well, it'll be there, but it'll.
We probably should talk to them and, uh, but I think, I think there's kind of a need there, Larry.
Yeah, I believe.
You want, you, I could talk to Andy. You want to talk to?
You can talk to everybody, just so.
I can.
Just so we talk to them.
You saying I talk too much? All right. And then, uh, the next thing is, uh, has been kind of a rough issue for everyone. Did we get a vote on this? Motion, let's get that passed.
And then the advertisement for bids as far as that?
Yes.
In January?
Yes.
Second.
Scott and, uh, and Larry?
Hi.
Russ?
Hi.
Hi.
We're looking forward to that project. The next, the next item is one that's been a problem for Olson's and for us and for some of the people that have water mains, but if you, the history of that is that they didn't put the curb stops in. And that was Rutledge's construction. And last meeting, whether we like it or not, we approved to let Rutledge's, uh, get by with just a, giving us the rods that we already paid for. And I think the vote on that was three to one, so we did pass that. And now Olson's came back to us and they tried to help us out somewhat because they took a little bit of the responsibility there. I think, I think probably that, I feel like it's more Rutledge's than it is us, the, and, I mean, there could be blame on all three parties, maybe, but. And Olson's have changed their policy. They put an email out and said, you gotta check those curb stops from now on because we have this situation. But Rod came up with, was an offer to us to help out a little bit and you guys can listen to what it is and then you can discuss it with, with Rod, okay?
Sure. Um, um, like Olson said, we've had a few discussions on the, the rods on, for that project. And Olson would like to provide forty-five hundred dollars in engineering fees, um, on, on these projects that we're working on here and these future projects as, as a way of maybe helping, uh, with some of the costs that you guys are going to incur with those curb stop lines.
Appreciate that you're trying to help us out on that. And the total cost of this project, according to when Mike was here the last time, with Kay contracting out of Wayne, it was around thirteen thousand dollars. And Rutledge's, for their involvement in it, they basically gave us the rods that we already paid for in the project. And we approved that last meeting, I believe, or two meetings, the last rigger meeting, and the vote was three to one. So, that's where we're at. And Olson's are offering four thousand and five hundred dollars worth of their services, their engineering services in the future, uh, to help us with, with the whole thing. Now, discussion.
Yeah, Rod, I'd like you to explain your responsibilities for a project like that. What's your job to be on the project?
As far as, we were the designers of the project.
Yeah.
And then we're also resident, uh, project representative. So, we, we don't do the means, we don't provide means and methods for a contractor to do the work. But we're there to help measure quantities and to answer questions. Um, we were not full-time observation on the project, but we were partial observation on the project.
What does that mean, Rod? It was Jeremy's, I, I mean, if you guys can think back, it was the water tower project, right?
Yeah.
This was done in conjunction with the water tower. And that was one that we thought was, I mean, it was a great project for the community, we thought. And Jeremy Walker was the engineer. Rod wasn't involved in it. Um, but then this came up. And, uh, if you're partial, if you're the guy that's looking at it partially.
So, so, I mean, we're there to, to make sure tests are passing, um, make sure stuff is moved, moved safely to make sure stuff put in in correct alignment. Um, we would have been as part of the punchless islands, which means we had the final, final walkthrough. Um, we should, we didn't check curb stops during that time. Uh, we would check other bowels during that time. So, I mean, we're a part of the project throughout the construction.
So, it's your job to oversee the project and make sure everything is getting done before we sign off and say it's complete, right?
No, I would say it's part of our responsibility.
So, you signed off and said everything was complete. Down the road, we find out it was not. Rutledge's walked away from the table from us. They didn't care because they used, or we said, too many years have passed. Can't do anything about it. Okay? You know, the city puts trust in you guys to do, to make sure everything's done. And I, sitting on the city council, sit here and say, okay, it's been done. You know, I don't know, I'm not out there, but I said, I trust it's been done. I find out it wasn't done. You know, have we always paid, have we always paid you and your bills have come in?
Yes, yeah. You're a very good client.
Yes, we are. So, I know when you have a customer that's not treated fair, you try to go out of your way to make sure you get the job done and everybody's fair. I feel the city has not been treated fair at this at all, you know? And, and it's just, I just shake my head because Rutledge just walked away. They used the excuse, what the heck? And I'm very disappointed that neither one of you have stepped up to the plate and said, we screwed up. I have a business. I screwed up a lot of times. And I always had to make sure I kept my customers happy. If it wasn't my fault, I still had to get out of my way and make sure that customer was happy. You know, if the truck was late and I didn't get something in, I still had to make sure I kept that customer happy. I don't think you guys have worked hard enough to keep us happy. The city of Wakefield has done a lot of business with you guys. And just for a few more thousands of dollars, it could have been, you know, it's, it was, missed something and it was our responsibility. But that's my opinion. I'm just really upset. And the other thing is, I'm upset is we've had three services that those people have spent their own money to take out of their pockets, fix something that should have been fixed in the first place. And we have sat here and let those three people spend their money and fix it. And we said, what the heck? So, tonight, I want to know two things, Council, is how we're gonna address this and what we're gonna do for the people that have already paid the bill.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Larry.
What was the total cost actually?
Well, this, this, we'll talk, we'll get you, Mike, and cut when mayor's public comment period is all right?
Well, this is about this project.
Okay, we're gonna.
You said the bid was fifteen thousand. Now, and a couple of months ago, you said it was eight or nine thousand. Who gave us that bid for eight or nine?
It was never eight or nine. It was thirteen.
Oh, it was thirteen?
We don't know if it's still, we don't know if the bid will still hold, but we're thinking it will at thirteen thousand from Kay's and Wayne. So, Scott?
Well, so thirteen thousand.
Well, that's the number we're willing to threaten to, to repair it.
To do them all properly, which.
Is that, is that reversing the other, the three that have already done it?
No.
Well, we had already talked that we were gonna reverse them and reimburse them. I mean, that's been the discussion. I don't think we're gonna leave them. We're not, that's not fair. So, I think we, we talked about that.
But we'll have to go back, find out who paid, because some did, some didn't, out of those three.
Right.
Have everybody pay.
Right.
So.
So, Scott, what else you got? Val?
Um, the thing, the thing, the only thing that saves anybody's tail right now is it doesn't have to be done. It only has to be done when there's a problem. When there's a problem, it's gonna be a pain. Because if it's this time of year and there's a leak and you can't get it shut off, it's a lot worse to deal with. You know, and, and each one, each one is individually really bad or not too bad and will be easy to fix.
I think our, I think what we're gonna do is fix them.
All of them?
Well, I think that was, that's what I understood we're gonna try and do, Val. I think that's, and you don't want to wait till there's an emergency and then say, oh, no.
Did, did we ever talk about getting a second estimate?
No.
I think that would help us.
We, we should get a second estimate, I think. I don't, we thought Kay's was pretty open.
I think Mike just did that in preparation of knowing roughly what that number was. Uh, you get to deciding to do this and then this spring say, April, we're gonna, we're gonna embark on this and certainly I think we can get at least two bids to come in and look at it and.
With that, with that estimate, where, where did you guys put the forty-five hundred? Do you know, like, does that based on what we, what we bid at already or?
That, that was based on that, that estimate that we had heard you guys received, so, yeah.
And Larry's saying he doesn't, he thinks that the city hired the contractor and we hired the engineers and that we shouldn't have, I think Larry was saying that we don't, he doesn't think we should be obligated for a third of it.
Yeah, I don't know that we're a third responsible project for this.
We've already paid for it, guys. That's fair enough, but.
But if you look back at this, it was a really good project. Uh, Jeremy is quality engineer. Uh, Olson's have gone back and sent emails out that from now on, they're gonna check curb stops, which you've never had curb stops missing before.
All the engineers I've talked to within Olson, they've never had this issue.
Never had it happen.
And, and it's unfortunate, you know, Rutledge's walked away.
And we're not gonna say bad about Rutledge's because we, we already settled with them.
Because of the statute of limitations they're protected, obviously. But, you know, I mean, we can split hairs and say fifty-fifty, you know, but.
Rod?
I mean, guys, I want to, I want to help out on the project and, I mean, if, if, if you guys are asking me that type of question and that's gonna make you feel, I mean, we're, we're trying to step forward here and we want to help out. If, if, if this goes up to sixty-five hundred dollars, we can make that happen. I mean, I'm not, I don't want to, we're negotiating such, right?
Oh, no.
Obviously, but, um, we're trying to help out. I mean, that was kind of what we brought forward. But if, if you're asking for sixty-five hundred dollars, then I think we could probably do that as well.
What was I asking?
I, I think, I think Paul might have.
I have a question to.
Did I?
I have a question to leave. So, our options of getting this project paid for are off the table. There's no options out there, of course, to legal force. There is no, nothing we can do legally.
As far as, I mean, you can make a demand, which we've done, and then, and now we've accepted Rutledge's offer, counteroffer. So, there really is no recourse for Rutledge's because we accepted that. Um, and they were the ones primarily responsible for, you know, installing and probably so. And with the statute of limitations, Ron, you can't, there's no one to sue. You gotta spend more legal fees, Larry, than it's.
Okay, I just wanted to know that and have that compared. There's no other options out there, okay?
Anything else, uh, Val? Scott?
I appreciate the fact.
No idea.
Yeah.
We appreciate it, yeah.
Well, I don't appreciate it because I think somebody screwed up.
There's no question that.
Somebody should have come up and said, hey, we screwed up. We're sorry about this. Let's sit down and fork it out. But Rutledge walked away.
But Larry, if Rutledge would have paid half, then Olson would have paid the other half.
Yeah, I don't think too much about that company.
I can't say anything about that company, but.
Since the quote you had for thirteen was, was just for the labor then?
No, it was the whole.
They were gonna dig and install each one of them.
I mean, that'd be labor costs, I mean, because we've got the materials.
Right.
Well, do we have them?
Yeah.
Did we get them?
Yeah.
You know, in all fairness here, Olson's could have leaned on the statute of limitations as well, right? Could have.
Do we need a motion to?
Yeah, well, are you making a formal offer?
Yeah, that, that's fine, guys. I, I'm here to try to do the best we can for, for, for the city of Wakefield and Olson to, to make sure that we can perform with this stuff. But, I mean, Val, we can't take on everybody else's.
I think for the record, you know, to have a record, somebody should just make a motion that they would accept an offer from Olson's versus sixty-five hundred, whatever it is.
In services.
A future.
Right, right.
In, in hearing services. Do we get a motion?
Why don't we just get a check for a month?
Well, that doesn't really protect them or you, you know? I mean, they want to put an end to it, too. You could take a check for sixty-five hundred and then come back and ask for more directly.
You will have your, I mean, it'll be paid soon because, uh, you guys are gonna do the, the engineering on the Sixth Street and you're gonna do some engineering for some other stuff, so.
And I really don't think Olson's would give you a check for sixty-five hundred without some assurance that was the end of, you know, of this kind of.
Well, Larry's being consistent because he didn't want to approve the settlement with the other, with the contractor. And so, he's saying this, he, he still feels the same way that we, and that's fine. And I understand what you're saying. But do we have a motion to, uh?
So, do we want to make sure the final bid is, is that?
It's gonna be close.
If it's gonna be close, I'll make a motion to accept the sixty-five, sorry.
I was just gonna say, when we do a motion, can we make the motion accepted and move forward with placing curb stops?
I think we need to move forward, yeah.
Yep, we'd make any hard one.
I'll make a motion to accept the sixty-five hundred in future, in hearing services and move forward with the curb stops.
Second.
What?
Installation.
Yeah, installation.
And then, I don't think, yeah, the, the understanding is that we're gonna pay for the ones that have already, the three that have already been done?
Be on another motion.
I, well, Larry could be part of this motion. I think you, you want to.
Two and three.
We've done those already.
We've discussed that half paid.
One bit.
They have paid.
I would, I would like to have two motions.
Okay.
I'm in favor of.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. We got your original motion. We got a second. Ross? I don't even know whose turn is to vote. Ross?
Hi.
Val?
Hi.
Scott? And Larry?
Hey.
Okay. And then Larry, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion that we reimburse the property owners that have replaced their curb stops. Now, just to reflect their own experience. I'll contact them and we'll find out.
Second.
Okay, um, we need to vote, and now we can, remember, Val?
Hi.
Next up, Scott?
Yeah.
Larry?
Hi.
And Ross? And we do have some bluegrass seed and some fine blade fescue, so I think when we get it done, we probably would need to have our guys, uh, Mike go around and seed all those areas too, probably, because the contractor won't seed them, will he?
I think that's part of it, probably, to clean this up a little bit and reseed it, keep it up.
Appreciate it, Rod. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your understanding. If I never come back.
I'll send, I'll send Matthew and I.
Thanks, Rod.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
And number thirteen is passage of, uh, an ordinance to confirm the sale of city-owned real estate. And this one, I believe, is Brian Miller's house?
Yes.
Okay.
For sixteen thousand something, yeah, price. And we've closed on it now, so we just need a ordinance to confirm the sale.
So, this, and this ordinance number is, it says on your document?
Nine.
Nine?
So, Brian was in this program that when he sold his house, then he has to pay the money back, right?
Has he sold his house?
Or got the house?
We closed because they weren't gonna loan him the money or the sale wouldn't go through without him owning the lot.
Right.
So, we closed with him. He's paid the sixteen thousand.
Yep.
So, he's square with that.
So, it's the sold, that, this is just the?
Just confirming the sale for the, for this.
So, do we, did you just have a motion to pass the ordinance?
Well, you need, somebody needs to introduce it and then you need to waive the three readings.
So, we need to introduce and move to pass ordinance nine, twenty nineteen, to confirm the sale of city-owned real estate. That's gonna happen. Any discussion?
I make the motion to introduce ordinance number nine dash twenty nineteen and the ordinance move pass.
So, it should be one more, you should introduce it and move to waive the three readings.
You know, that's interesting. This is not a real controversial issue, but we kind of talked in the retreat also about we weren't gonna waive the three readings very often unless there was a, we might waive the third reading, but we kind of wanted to go with the first reading and then do the, give us a month to look things over and then do the second reading and the third. It's kind of how we were gonna try to do business, but this isn't a real controversial thing, but you want to waive the three readings, why go with this?
I think that's a good point. We talked about holding three readings, reading, readings.
It's not gonna hold anything up here, is it?
No, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
Then you just introduce it and do one reading and then it'll be on the agenda next week.
Okay, so, Larry's introduced it?
For one reading.
Okay, so then why do you do just three readings? An ordinance confirming the sale of certain city-owned real estate to Brian L. Miller and to establish an effective date, which would be today's date. Be ordained by the mayor and the city, the council of the city of Wakefield that he's met all of his options and it's got everything else in there.
So, we just introduce it and, and, hold on.
Okay, don't sign it yet. But we have the number on there, I think, number nine?
Yeah.
All right. And the next item is authorize the mayor to sign a deed of trust for the city-owned real estate. This is.
That, that's just on the table.
That's table?
Yeah. It, it's just not necessarily you then. I've got a paper for you to sign, you are.
Okay. Approval of Community Development Block Grant number eighteen, uh, PW zero-one thirteen, associated drawdown. And this is the Missioner Street budget? Jim, what is this one?
Yes, this is for the Missioner Street reimbursement of Olson's services.
Okay. And let's see, Mel?
Eight thousand seven hundred twenty.
Thanks. So, we need a motion to approve the drawdown number seven, Community Development Block Grant eighteen.
So moved.
Val? Val and Scott? All right. Val?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And Ross? Okay, mayor's public comment period. We got a good audience here tonight. There is food there. As you know, man, I don't want to have to take it home. I'll eat all the fries and be really gaining weight. Um, any comments? Jim, Sean, Mike, Megan, Brady? Okay, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. Um, next thing, Mike's not here tonight, but he, did he give you a report, Jim, or?
Oh, I'm sick and we didn't want him around here.
Okay.
I talked to him briefly today. He said that dumb truck that should have been here last month should be here Friday.
Okay. I just asked you. He said, uh, the next week or so. Good. Uh, Jim's report.
He has a couple items, a sales tax update for the new year. We call a new year starting in October, so last month's was twenty thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars, this month seventeen three oh three. So, average about eighteen-nine, um, per month, a good start on, on the total for our sales tax. And just for your legislative update, I included in your packet, um, a list of bills that are carryover bills. I think the one that's called in is land bank, six fourteen, if I remember right, is that number? So we'll be watching that and trying to get that thing on their dock to, for approval as soon as possible.
So you announced at the legislative meeting? Did you go by yourself, or did you have other?
No, well, I mean, there was a whole group of people there, so...
You're on that committee, right?
Correct. And again, saying the other night at the special meeting that I've talked to the senator and mentioned the need to pass land bank and work on some of that other legislation too, so... We'll see how it goes. It'll be started there in January in a short session, so...
Anything else, Jim?
I don't have anything right now.
You, you were talking about maybe we could get, have a retreat again in December or January?
Oh, absolutely, yep, yep. We talked about, it's just a, the comment for discussion is, when are you thinking you wanna do something like that?
So we'll talk...
You need to throw some dates out there and see what we can come up with and try to get somebody to come in and help work through some of our projects, so...
So be December, January, whatever works out best for the council?
Probably be January, February, just typically.
January and February?
January.
January.
Yeah.
January, February sometime.
Sometime in there, okay.
I have a question for you. I see you're on your sales tax update. You're gonna be reviewing proposed projects for consideration and get support for the ballot November. I thought we were gonna appoint a committee, we talked about it.
You're gonna, you're gonna approve a committee tonight, I think, Larry?
Yeah.
Here's the sales tax promotion committee, you want it? It's Larry Soderberg, chairman, Brian Miller, Janelle Eaton, Jim Clark, Diane Johnson, Krista Raver, Larry Clay, Cheryl Greve, and two people that I didn't get total commitments from, Joey Morgan and Ginger Nixon. Ginger indicated that she would like to be on it, not to me, but to someone else, and Joey thinks he will be on it, but he didn't wanna commit for sure. So we've got five men, five women, and two from the rural area, Krista and Joey. And anyone that wants to go to the meetings and things, and I think Jim will probably be one of the guys there with the, 'cause he's on the sales tax committee also along with Janelle and Cheryl are both on it, right? And that committee will come up with the, Larry, your committee, 'cause I'm appointing you as the chairman, you will come up with the recommendations and lead the way as far as trying to promote that sales tax. And the good news is, the survey we did two years ago, there were a majority of the people that responded that were in favor of continuing the one percent sales tax. And one of the things that we've talked about with the original in the pool was one of the main projects, and looking at ideas for a project for this one, so... That's, that's what we've done. And after tonight, Larry, if we approve this, you'll be all set to go. All right, it's, it's an important project.
Any, any update on that?
I did talk to the project manager last week. We're looking at, unfortunately, getting documents that the mayor is gonna need to sign, such as a contract agreement for the work and all that. Is slowly coming in, maybe next week, hopefully before Christmas, so we can get at least some of these documents going and working with Michael Foods on easements and getting those done. I think I sent you a whole list of things that we're gonna have to do prior to the construction of that project, but we're slowly working on.
Did Terry get the trees started?
I don't know if Mr. Donovan was supposed to trim some trees so that they can move power lines, but...
You got power lines to move and stuff?
So we're kinda waiting on him to get that done as well.
We have not started any work there.
No, sir, no.
And the meter allergies are predicted to have a wet spring, so hopefully we cross our fingers.
It won't happen.
So that's where that's at. Any other questions, Jim? Jim did take initiative and contacted Olson Associates, Olson's, to get that, get a hydrologist or one of their engineers, it's a water person. To work on that floodplain thing, which is real important, because if they put more ground on the floodplain, that's just more ground that we can't build on because we can't get any insurance, so... It's on the website, I've got that, I think Jim has the card of the, of the website and the people to contact. But if we contacted before January thirty first, they said a lot of what we see as people living here, as to where the water was, or where it wasn't, is very important to them, and that can change what they put in the floodplain, so I think we wanna be active on that. And then we'll go back to the second page, we've got reports, please review, Lee?
Just had a brief meeting, no streetlights were reported out. Val did suggest that we might wanna look at putting a light up on the entrance to the civic center parking lot. Noticed at night when we come out onto Seventh Street there, it's dark and there's some poles and the ditch and stuff, you gotta, you know, maybe could be a hazard. And it would be better from, so I think Jim was gonna look at maybe seeing the feasibility of putting a streetlight up there. Brief discussion on nuisances, Silvira Hernandez's property. Donovan was just gonna follow up and look at the starts, and he wasn't here at the meeting, so we'll look forward on that. No issues on snow removal, although there was some discussion about at the civic center, slick sidewalks or something, having to do a little better job. They clean the sidewalks, but they need to come back with a shovel or something.
Yeah, they couldn't get to all of it with their writing equipment, they just couldn't get this all scooped through. They just needed a little more work on it, yeah, like seven.
Bernice was here from the sheriff's office, they've had some domestic assault, I think she had one drug bust or somebody with early six grams of meth, which is a lot. I mean, it's about that much of a baggie, which is way more than we usually see it out here, but otherwise it's been fairly quiet.
Thanks, Lee. The community redevelopment authority, the tax income and financing committee? Send you a bag, but you only get, Megan? You still go to the meetings?
Yeah.
So there's nothing else there. Planning commission? Okay, park board? Library board, their twenty minute meeting? Civic Center board? Been really active.
We have something we want to bring to your attention. In working with it for almost a year now, one of the things we really want to do is investigate possibility of a manager, part-time, you know, not, not a whole lot of time, but one person to be the contact person down there to work with us, to work with the city, to work with renters. And we would, we would like you to consider that, and I don't know how that would work in with our budgeted funding. We're also gonna shoot, have a meeting with Zach and have him kind of explain to everybody how things are working financially, 'cause we're totally lost, we're all confused. And so we need, we need to understand our finances totally first, and then understand, then be able to come back to the council, maybe ask to put on the agenda as far as offering a position to somebody to manage the facility. Did I say that about right?
Yep.
Okay.
And you have carryover on the senior center board too, because Sam's on both boards, right?
Right.
But Sam didn't make the last three meetings of yours, or?
Oh, yeah.
He didn't make the senior center board meetings, I guess.
Is that her last, or at least one? And Phyllis is going off, but she's convinced another senior to go on, which is good. And we're, so we're still short one, if anybody does have a lot of time, wants to come to another meeting once a month.
You do meet at least, at least once a month, don't you? And Phyllis was really good on there, didn't you think? She didn't wanna do it, but she said, you do it for me, or that I tried to twist her arm, 'cause she's good, and...
And we lost Maria, she just...
And raised her baby, and we were, Janelle ate with, with her, and Phyllis said, my memory just is just not there anymore. She remembered every name, like a hundred names, and Janelle, well, couldn't remember who the, you know, and so, but she did a nice job, so thanks, Val, you guys have a nice committee there. All right, fire department, you know Adam, you know, you're here. Citizens Advisory Committee, they meet January, I don't think you're right. Cemetery Board? Biggest news there is that Sandy's gonna retire, right? Yeah, I think he'll help out still a little bit, and he really likes the history of the cemetery, he's a history guy. Hatchery Board? And that is on the back. And the rehab board, they meet, I was in rehab. And the tree board, I guess I traded old Bob today, but anything there, Nikki?
Uh, we did just get notification that we received a grant for twenty twenty.
Wow, good for you. Appreciate that.
Much of that, like, up to five thousand dollars, five thousand.
That's good. I see. I mean, this is just a term that we get, after we convene after the adjournment?
Yeah, I know, that's a, I'm just...
Okay, if you look, if you guys look on your agenda, you don't think we're gonna pay the claims?
What you can do is...
Is the next item is the claims. We haven't, if you looked at them, signed the checks, do you have a motion you wanna make to pay the claims? Sounds like you guys have gone through them pretty thoroughly, except for the ones that we signed that are just added to that. The biggest one that was added was, like we said, the engineering. Scott's got a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Val's second, yeah. Ross? Val?
Aye.
Scott? And Larry?
Aye.
And the next item on the agenda is action for professional, professional services to complete the city audit. And...
We got a proposal from Mr. Reddell.
Right. I'd like to have Zach address this a little bit.
Do you wanna consider executing session for this?
Well, that's what I thought.
I don't think you really need to, unless you really want to, but...
Yeah, I think we should.
Well...
Can we put this further back at the end of the agenda then?
I mean, who, who wants to be the, I mean, we got a proposal from Reddell, are there any other?
This is, there's opinions about what we should do, I think.
This is my personal view of this, I guess, we haven't saw it yet, what's happening?
No.
It, it's not about seeking something out. I talked about it.
That's probably what we should do, is take the session, I think, maybe we do that, so, why don't we, can we pass on this for now and have it at the end?
Well, that's the last item, when you adjourn, sign, you die, it'll go to the next one. And it's not on the agenda for the next meeting, so you either wanna handle it now...
But why don't we, don't we have to approve these now, then?
For the next meeting. When you adjourn, sign, you die, and this meeting's over.
Oh, so this isn't on the agenda for the, I see. Well, fellas, we really kinda need an answer to this.
You can go into executive, come out, make action, then adjourn, sign, die. It shouldn't take long.
You can do that to the, to the audience, but I think that's where we're gonna have new folks, so...
I'll make a motion for the executive session.
All right. They're actually there too, I guess, you know? Any discussion? We got Ross, vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 We need a motion to adjourn, sign, you die, if there is...
Need a motion to adjourn, sign, you die?
Go ahead, Ross, we got a second, though?
Scott's got the second.
Last motion here.
Okay, and vote, Ross, Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott? Aye.
So now you, if you wanna get right into the next meeting, you'd need a new roll call. Or you take a break.
Break?
Eat fudge.
Want a fudge? You don't eat fudge either, do you?
Open, open, I can pause.
Okay, we, we'll convene the, the second half of the meeting here and do a roll call, Larry? Ross? Val and Scott? We have two applications for the Wakefield Volunteer Fire Department. And do we know who those two are?
Mike Anderson and Victoria Sanchez.
Mike and Victoria? Mike Anderson, Victoria Sanchez. And do we have a motion, is there any discussion, Larry, that you need to say anything?
No.
Recommended.
We have a motion to approve Mike Anderson and Victoria Sanchez for Wakefield Volunteer Fire Department?
So move.
Second.
Val moved, is Ross second? Ross?
Aye.
Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And Larry? Okay, Mike and Victoria have been approved, good. Do we have documents signed for the levy project? No.
I don't think, we've got essentially two options there, is, one would be authorize the mayor to sign the documents when they come, or indoor setup, special meeting when they're here, so you can all get a chance to look at them and review them. What documents would they be?
Temporary easements, the agreement with the Corps of Engineers.
Basically, the construction contract, going on a project, it's, it's a commitment to the project, definitely.
And then we're gonna end up owning some of the, where the new levy is actually reconstructed. We, and so there's gonna be...
We'll buy that from Michael Foods, so, after the project's completed, it'll just be numbers and things like that.
Something, put a new trail in for the new section. So that'll be coming to us.
What was your question?
Numbers. We'll see numbers.
Sure.
So, we don't know numbers yet, though, but we think it's gonna be, we think our six hundred thousand will cover the...
We think it will.
That's what Jim thinks, right?
He switched that to, that's what Jim thinks.
Yes, I do. Don't hold me to that, but we are working with the Economic Development Group on the, on a grant to help support this project, so... There's no promises there, but we're working on it, and if we can get funding, then we'll definitely take it as well, so...
Is that a FEMA bill?
Uh, no, it's a state man, right? State emergency, it's, it's all about the flood community, so...
Our share is like twenty percent.
Ours is with Corps of Engineers, twenty percent. If we can get anything from a, a grant, that just takes our responsibilities down a little bit.
With, with the paperwork that we may authorize you to sign, is there any financial obligation right now?
Yeah, you'll, you'll be obligating the, the...
Twenty percent.
Okay, yeah, but I, but I mean, we don't write the check right now, do we?
I'm not for sure, I haven't seen the document.
Okay.
But they're gonna want some type of arrangement probably with the bank, and, so...
And the next item of business is to amend the lease agreement with Humpty Dumpty Daycare, and I'm sure this involves the new construction.
You want us to act on that one?
That one, we're not ready to act on, are we, on twenty four?
Well, you, you could authorize all the mayor to sign, but I...
Jim wasn't having a meeting, I think.
I think it's best to wait.
Everybody look at it all.
I think you should get a chance to look at it, though.
Okay.
It's a big project.
What's another meeting?
So, Humpty Dumpty Daycare, I didn't get to this one, I guess I avoided the item for some reason.
The question there is, the lots run east and west over there, and right now they're on lots three and four. And the question is, do they need one and two, or, they're gonna expand.
Right.
So, I don't know that they need to have lot one, but I don't know, so we prepared two ways, either it's to just amend the lease, so it includes lot two, plus three and four if they already have, or if it should be one and two.
Well, they're gonna have, they need one and two, just so they can maintain the, have the property looking. Does it not wanna maintain it?
I don't know.
City's mowed that part for, for years, so I, the question is, if you deed that or leased that over, then Humpty Dumpty Daycare will be responsible for it, all the way to the north end there, so...
So what about Humpty Dumpty Daycare, where do they want?
They have to mow it now, so...
And he does?
I think.
So this is the resolution. Which is, is there a number? Which is, is there a number?
That's where we used to play out there when I was in school, Wakefield, there was a big tree in that corner.
Does, does the daycare have any use for lot one? So what's that gonna be? What's that? Does the daycare have any use for lot one? They can't do much out there without a fence, sometimes they'll take the school age kids out there.
They could, they could do a community garden.
The lease is a twenty-five year lease from two thousand and ten.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if you had some idea for development on one, if you include one in this lease, you'd directly be tied it up until two thousand and thirty-five.
Probably not, maybe in that, I don't know about houses.
You couldn't be much of fifty feet, then we kinda detract from it.
It's old, old, old size lot, fifty ladder. Which is what a lot of ours are, yes. I mean, I don't know, people move to the house there, or, commercial, or something.
What do you think, do them both?
Unless you have some idea, something else.
Would be a resolution, we could put in a small business.
Community garden, yeah, they do too.
What do you think, why just do two? That's all they need, right?
Just, just give them what they need now, and then, if there's future need, it might come back for more.
Yeah, give you a little flexibility with one, if some, something comes up.
Something does happen, yeah. Remember that for, for a community.
So, the resolution is...
That would be this resolution, prepared by the way.
Resolution, if I can find the right, is that the number?
It's gonna be, let's say twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
This resolution to enter into an amended lease agreement with Humpty Dumpty Daycare Incorporated, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, for the purpose of operating and expanding a community childcare facility on city property, to authorize the mayor to sign all the necessary documents to effectuate said lease agreement and to provide an effective date. Whereas the city of Wakefield entered into a twenty-five year lease agreement dated with the current date with Wakefield Healthcare Center Incorporated, a... That's what it is, Wakefield Healthcare Center, that Humpty Dumpty is?
No, you keep reading.
I might try to read. A nonprofit corporation is tenant for the purpose of constructing and operating a childcare facility on the following described real estate to wit lots...
Three and four.
You need to address that.
Okay, that's all I need to read in here.
You read that, whereas...
Whereas said childcare center was constructed and operated on the above described real estate owned by the city of Wakefield by Wakefield Healthcare Center Incorporated. And whereas said lease agreement was assigned to Wakefield Healthcare Center Incorporated as tenant to Humpty Dumpty Daycare Incorporated, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, without objection by the city of Wakefield as landlord.
And that's, so that's who we're dealing with, is Humpty Dumpty Daycare, not the Wakefield Healthcare Center.
Okay. So we need to introduce and move to pass the resolution twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen. I'd like to introduce and move to pass the resolution twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen.
All right. We need a second, right?
Second.
Val's seconded it. And then we need, just to vote on that discussion? Any discussion at all? We've already discussed it to your satisfaction, Larry?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Is it a one dollar lease, or what do we need?
We got a fund yield lease, I'm not sure.
I think that's what we do.
One dollar, I think.
They haven't paid us.
They haven't paid.
I have it on the wall there, this is what we paid, we put it in frame.
Okay. We've been going through the boards and the committees and trying to get these done, we've got about over half of them done. I didn't wanna put anybody in a committee unless they had a, a commitment, so like, we had the library board done, but then the person who was going to do it tentatively thought she'd be able to do it, she kinda decided she couldn't do it because her mother, uh, has been going in and out of the hospital. So we're still looking for someone, for that committee and a few others, but do we have to reorganize this tonight with, uh, like, with Ross's? Ross is still the chairman?
I mean, you still have to do the standing committees?
Yeah, that's all we have to do.
Right.
So this stays the same. The Citizen Advisory Committee, which is LB eight forty sales tax, and these people kinda decide when we can spend sales tax money for a good purpose. First of all, does it meet the criteria? Secondly, is this the purpose that they think that they would like to put some money into? And how much money have we spent? Nearly million dollars or not quite?
Oh, probably well over that.
Well over that. So it's a very important committee, and the members are from previous appointment, were Janelle Eaton, Leslie Beebe, and then Cheryl's term, Cheryl Greve's term is up, and she accepted a reappointment until the year two thousand and twenty-three. And John Torzan has one more year in his appointment, he's, uh, will be completed his term next year. And Gary Don Solman has two years left on his term. And then, I didn't appoint, uh, I guess that's the committee, five people right there. And then the Project Review Committee is Leslie Beebe, it has to be one person from the advisory committee, which is Leslie. And then it has to be the director of our, uh, LB eight forty fund and the program, and that's Jim. And then the third one was Mike Palmer, and their terms are all ending next year, so that's that committee. And we went over the Sales Tax Promotion Committee, it's five men, five women, Larry Soderberg, Brian Miller, Janelle Eaton, Jim Clark, Diane Johnson, Crystal Raver, Larry Clay, Cheryl Greve, and Ginger Nixon, Joey Borg, uh, actually wanted to, Ginger wanted to be on the committee, she told one of the members that we've now have, and then Joey was almost not quite sure that he wanted to be on it. Cemetery Board, the new appointments are Gary Don Solman and Kenny Pennant decided to, uh, continue to be on the Cemetery Board, which is a good deal. And Sandy Ott is retiring, he did a great job in the cemetery. So I just made an appointment here, and the council might disagree with it, I'm just gonna call him a non-voting, he's the historian and the emeritus member of the Cemetery Board, because he has done a lot of good things out there, and I think we as a council appreciate that, is that all right?
Who's that?
Sandy Ott. Cause he would like to be a little bit involved still with helping with, especially the new person get started. And he has got a lot of history, and he's, he really values the history of the cemetery. The Wakefield Planning Commission doesn't change, there were no new appointments, it's still Jim Limco, Pat Luns, Terry Baker, Gerald Trader, Pat, I got Pat Luns twice, and Karen Victor. Uh, the Board of Adjustments is, Tim Beebe's the chairman of that, Tom Henderson and Rex Hansen are, still have their terms. And Kenny Thompson and Terry Baker, did you get ahold of Terry today?
Terry?
Who was gonna call?
I think he's out, he's out of town.
That's why I couldn't get ahold of him then. And we assume that Terry will also, uh, still be...
He's not planning and zoning, he'll still stay.
On that, yeah. And Kenny Thompson. The Wakefield Board of Health is Paul Eaton, Ross Hansen, Donovan Berklin, and Julie Roth, they're from the Northeast Department of Public Health. Those are, those are my appointments, at least, they're not necessarily have to be approved, but... The Depot Committee, uh, Jim Clark, I talked to Jim, and Jim had suggestions, and, uh, he had two positions that were open. And Hannah Borg took one of the positions, and Andy Hamble took the other, but we had to twist Andy's arm a little more than it has, but... So the committee is Ken Folsen, Jim Clark, Andy Hamble, Ella Johnson, Barb Stout, Martel Holm, Jim Stout, Hannah Borg. And Eileen Pennant is going off of the committee, uh, because she has a really hard time hearing. And she's also been tremendous on that committee in my mind, and I just have her a member emeritus, so she can go to the meetings and, and, and have the social part of it anyway. The Civic Center Board, and this is, Board is, has really been working, and I think, need a pat in the back, because I know a lot of their work is frustrating. But we appreciate what you guys are doing there. Val Bard, Larry Soderberg, Bernice Vallejo, Julie Rose, Tom Decker, Martel Holm, Mike Louf, and Sam Uther. And then I have the Library Board ready, but now that we've gotta find another member, I don't, so... The other appointments, there are six other committees that have to be appointed, and I was gonna try to talk to all these people, and I thought if I took another month, it would be better for me to do that and have them at the January meeting. So those are appointments that I have at this time. And Ross continues on the Board of Health because he's the vice chairman, and he's also a medical guy. Uh, so, that's all right with you, I didn't talk to you about that, was that okay? All right.
So you need a motion to approve the appointments?
Can I get a motion to approve, or do you have a lot of discussion, you don't like my appointments?
Make a motion to approve the appointments for the boards.
Thanks, Larry.
Second.
And Val's seconded it. All right, um, Val?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Ross? Larry?
Aye.
Ross won't vote, did you vote, or Larry, you vote now? You will?
I will.
All right, we just got done. That, we talked earlier than the work session, and, uh, it's kind of an exciting project, we mentioned that one of the things the city was kind of interested in when we had our retreat, that we'd like to see get done in town, was the track football facility, and the school is kinda taking an initiative there with the new principal, uh, Mr. Farret, has kinda taken the bolt of the horn, and he's getting some things done, he knew an engineer, Jeff Emanuel, that's a big time engineer, he did the, the Huskers field turf, and he's done many big stadiums like that, he's, he's a really nice gentleman, he donated some of his time at Rushville, and he also was down looking at our dugouts, because he's gonna build baseball dugouts at Lincoln Christians, so he's got a real involvement in, in things, and does a lot of community, uh, things as a community service. But he's talked to Jeff Emanuel, and Jeff's gonna help him on the drawings and, uh, contribute some of his time. And then also, uh, I think that, uh, Elmer Karine's daughter is married to an architect, and he overheard Jeff's talking to someone else, and he said, I know, my wife's from Wakefield, and he wanted to also contribute some of his time. And so those are good, good things and positive things. But on our agenda, we have a letter of intent for football field track project, and, uh, Jim and I went and talked to, uh, both, Mark, Mr. Bijot and Mr. Farret. And one of the things we have to have to apply for these funds through the, uh, state program is it has to be owned by, half of it has to be owned by the city. But I think that, uh, yesterday, they kinda felt like that probably not gonna be possible to go that route then. And now Megan's got some information where they think the school board would approve that, we don't know.
Yeah.
So we're gonna wait until the January meeting, and, uh, I don't think we've got any, uh, right now, the, the board just wanted more information, is that correct, guys? No?
Do you wanna share, do you wanna share anything at all?
No, we're not opposed to it, we're just gonna wait.
Yeah, I mean, besides what we talked about in the work session, there's really not much more to add. You guys do have the renderings and, um, the, the floor plans or the site plan, um, you know, now that those are subject to change, but, and then a copy of the draft of the letter of intent, so...
Well, it's kind of exciting to me, because two of the big things that we talked about in the, as goals of ours, the street projects, we're gonna have a really good year getting streets done, and we could end up in a couple of years with that done, so, that's encouraging. Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Yeah.
Twenty-seven.
I don't see twenty-seven. Oh.
Authorizing myself to sign employee retirement documents, and Tricia can talk a little bit about that.
So I had a telephone conversation with Michelle Satorius, and she's ready to, our, our C employee retirement plan was...
Which we talked about.
Yeah, was, was not authorized, it'd be a 401K plan, you can't have a governmental subdivision, you employees in that kind of plan, so... So there's two things, one is to appeal to the IRS to allow you to do a voluntary correction, and the second part is that now you need to set up a different plan. And, um, there's all, already, uh, you know, documents that can be sent, that can be sent to the IRS, but somebody's gotta be authorized to do those. And then, and then they also have to be authorized to deal with setting up the new plan. The, the title says the admin, city administrator to sign, um, I talked to Michelle again today, or yesterday, and she said she didn't care, city clerk, city administrator, and whoever's happens to be there, as the documents come in, get them turned over and, and get sent out. Anything that they would sign, she would authorize first, I mean, there's nothing that's gonna be done in terms of getting us straight with the IRS or setting up the new, uh, retirement plan that she hasn't okayed. So, anything, so anything, anything, pardon me?
She would take either Sax's signature or Jim's signature.
Right.
So is that what you want the, uh, motion to say?
Please, yeah, and I think that's how it's been prepared.
Does this, does this include?
Not, no.
Not the enough the Care Center?
No, not, not.
Okay.
That I know of, I, I didn't discuss with her the Care Center, cause I don't know where they, I don't even know where it's at right now, I haven't really been informed about what's going on with that.
So you guys have a meeting here tomorrow or Friday?
I don't know, Zach has, have you guys set up a meet, a telephone conference?
I just asked Michelle about Tuesday now, she can't do anything Friday. She can't? Should I get a question asked, this is the soonest we can do is Tuesday.
Do you know where things are with the Care Center? I don't even know.
We haven't heard from Michelle, please just check today.
Oh, okay.
I would, I would like to find a way to get, you know, everyone together, so, cause obviously, you know, you might be together and playing.
Yes, and, and then, the, I think the resolution is broad enough to address the Care Center too. Only thing I've really been personally involved with is the city side, the city employees in terms of, uh, office and the shop guys. So I think the resolution is broad enough to address them too, as long as they're on a 401K, aren't they, do you know?
I don't think so.
The Care Center isn't? Okay.
So right now, you just want this, uh, to be passed for the city employees?
Um, it addresses the 401K, and it addresses a new plan that might consist of what's called a 401A and a 457B.
So that is, is Michelle gonna work on the POA, or how's that gonna work?
Michelle's, yeah, the, yeah, Michelle will do it all, yeah.
She will?
Yeah.
Okay, does she have a timeline there?
That's a good question.
Okay, just because, I mean, we're kinda losing on a few things, do you know?
Yes.
So we'd like to get this resolved as quick as possible, plus, obviously, legal fees that would be in her.
Right. And I mean, it's, um... I did emphasize with her the anxiety of all involved about getting something set up so the contributions could begin again. So I, I'm hoping that that has some, you know, I press upon her that we need to move as quickly as we can, so...
I mean, is there any thoughts in just moving forward with the POA from the AI and BPI?
Uh, the P, the, did you guys have PAI?
No.
Okay. Huh?
Just us.
Just you, yeah. Uh, we, I, I talked to her about PAI, which is the Plan Administrator for the, for the city office staff in the shop. And she has reviewed some of the documents that they've already prepared, proposed, they send to the IRS, and she felt that they weren't completely accurate. And that's one reason why she was a little bit hesitant to say, just let them do it. Because she would wanna be reviewing it anyway, she doesn't wanna bump heads with their attorneys. She just said, I think that you guys would probably spend less time and money and get this done more quickly if I just did it.
She said that?
Yes.
Okay, I talked to Justin the other day.
Yes, I know, he's concerned, because I have to tell you, the woman is thorough, but I do know that when it's done, it's gonna be done right.
Yeah, and I don't doubt that. Yeah.
So, not too confident PAI is, um, familiar enough with this process, which I don't know, they won't talk to me, without authorization too, from, you know, from Zach. Whether, whether they do this frequently, or this is once in a, you know, while, or they're, this is something she does, this is her work. You know, and if she has some questions about the, the submissions that they had already prepared and, uh, wanted them corrected, you know, that just says to me, let's not do that.
Yeah, I mean, he, he made the comment, the principal and BPI, their legal counsel had looked at the proposals and okayed them to move forward with the POA. You know, so I mean, that would be an option for us. But do you think it'd be better to table this until after the meeting? Or is that, does that not benefit anything?
The meeting, I think, that she wants to have with P, with, um... With principal and BPI, has to do with setting up the new plan for the city office and shop guys. I don't know where things are with the Care Center out of that, I don't know. I assume that was going on by itself, proceeding. It should be, yeah. So in terms of setting up a new plan, I mean, I, I think that this is broad enough, it's not for the old plan, for the city, not for the old plan for the Care Center, but I think it's broad enough to include the Care Center on setting up a new retirement plan, because they're out of compliance too, correct? Yes, so I think it's broad enough to handle that, it's not maybe broad enough to handle the IRS issues on the other end, so... You know, on the old plan, to make those voluntary correction, so that people don't lose the assets that they set aside and have some kind of an income tax consequence from the improper retirement. and have some kind of an income tax consequence from the improper retirement plan.
Right. So really this ordinance, all this does is authorize it to be assigned, whatever documents you need to sign.
Right, that she, yes, that she proposes, I mean, it's not, it's not for them to sign whatever document comes across their desk, it's not.
Okay, because he made the comment today, once the PO is, POA is submitted, it can take three months to two years, they were told, to approve it?
Yes, that's on the end where, where you're doing the voluntary, um, correction part, where it has to, kind of, the funds sit in that old, um, improper plan, but what we want to do while that's in the process, and it can take that long, is to get the new plan started so the contributions can start in the new plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so eventually with doing the voluntary process, you're hoping that the IRS will say, oh, okay, we see you made a mistake, and we see how you're gonna correct this, and we see what you've set up now, now you can roll the funds over into your new plan without any income tax detriment to you.
Okay.
Yes, so part of it is to keep going on the new plan so contributions can begin back.
Could I ask you, you meet with her next week? Can you ask her what is gonna be our best option to refund our employees on all their lost benefits over the past couple of months, pay periods, I guess? Okay.
Ross, you understand this a little bit?
Yeah.
She was, you understand?
I've been following it.
You know, it's a very technical field, and I'm glad I don't ever do it, because it, I don't, you know. But I'm, I'm grateful for Michelle, she understands.
Michelle Satorius?
Yes, Satorius.
So, this is a Resolution twenty-seven, forty nineteen, and this is basically authorizing our clerk and our city administrator to, uh, sign the documents as they come across their desk, and either one?
Either one.
Okay. And are you guys any, are you fine with this, Larry?
Yeah.
It's fine with us, much as we know.
As much as we know.
We trust, we trust.
So moved.
You wanna hear the resolution, or you heard enough? I don't think I could explain it any better than Teresa, man, I know I can't. Should we just go with what Teresa told us, and, and, uh, our employees are happy with that?
Yeah, we need to get moving on it. I know there's a little unrest there, so, frustration.
How far back does it go, Teresa?
I think, uh, I think that, oh, the plan, I think we've been in that, in the city side since two thousand and six.
Oh.
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of money involved, but I think about six hundred thousand.
All my money.
All their retirement money.
So, we're anxious to get it resolved.
Well, let's, let's, let's approve this, I guess. Put me in the motion now. Val and Scott, and Larry, Ross, Val.
Aye.
And Resolution twenty-seven, twenty nineteen, uh, pursuant to the difficulties in our 401Ks and, um, all those other numbers that are there, we're gonna accept that, is that good enough? Point aside right now before I retrain my mind. Is that all we need?
You had a vote on, you introduced and moved to pass.
We voted. Now, thanks for coming tonight, everybody, I think we're ready to adjourn, and appreciate the audience, appreciate you guys being here. You sure you grabbed something from Janelle? We got a motion for adjourn? Oh, you did?
Second.
Oh. Larry?
He's seconded it.
Ross? Val?
Aye.
I forgot.